So at 6 o'clock, I'd like to open the February 11th, 2019 Woodbury Select Board Meeting. First, I'd like to ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda. Brian?
None.
Michael?
No.
Really?
No, unusual.
Ah, it is. And since there are no members of the public here, there will be no public comment. Pretty obvious. So next on the agenda is to approve the bills to the town.
Make a motion to approve the bills. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Brian?
No.
No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the previous select board meeting. I know, Michael, I think you have a copy of that.
Yeah, I do. You don't have a copy?
I read them earlier today and I didn't find anything unusual.
Alright, and I made the one change that you suggested.
So I'd like to introduce a motion that we approve. The meeting minutes from January 28th, 2019 Select Board Meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll sign. Pass it on.
She kept that all printed out?
Yeah.
I need to come.
It's coming your way.
Oh, I don't need to print it out for her.
No. No. Pretty self-sufficient here tonight. So that computer just turned right on.
Does it want me to?
Sure. Ms. Smith, are we ready for her report?
Ms. Smith?
She's removed her hair. Yeah, we're supposed to get some snow tomorrow night?
Yeah, tomorrow night and Wednesday morning during the day too, I guess.
They've got a sure snow blow up this year.
Yeah, there's a lot of snow in the woods.
Rain, snow.
So have the delinquent taxes come down a lot? Just trying to remember. There are $96,000. By the looks of it.
Yes, 96,141.65.
Is it higher than last year? Does anyone remember?
There should be a comparison here on the...
On the financial statement?
Yeah.
Well, that's the end of the year. It's not going to be...
Right, that's the...
...to key. Same timeframe. That goes to 12 months and this is going to be at 8.
I think last year was over that, I thought. It was like $115,000. That's come down.
Due to Duprum, which equals to the $443,093.19. So income...
So I'm just looking at this, Brandy. So the paving reserve is $42,000?
Yes.
Okay. And what else is interesting here? Highway equipment reserve, which is not a four-letter word, is $16,478. So these are in fact, some of them are reserve funds and others are just funds. And we'll have a discussion about the paving reserve fund...
Yes.
...in the highway portion of the meeting. Because we'll probably cap that.
So revenue over the last two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Our Swenson check came in for $7,409.64.
That's a quarterly?
Yes.
Okay.
What?
Sure.
Delinquencies that have come in in the last two weeks, $12,435.92.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks' worth.
Yeah, that is nice. So I like this, and the way you split it up, you know, 35, 40, and 25, you can see it.
And also, once the town report comes in, I am more than happy, I'm planning on announcing which pages they can find the income for each of them. They each have their own balance sheet for the funds. So it'll be very clear to see last fiscal years. And then, starting this year, creating the Excel spreadsheet that will go into report next year.
Okay.
But it's not going into the general fund.
So this payment from Swenson, was that for the end of last year, 2018? Or was that for the first payment for 2001? Because they pay by calendar year?
They do.
Yep. So was that for this year?
It was October, November, December.
Okay, so it's for the last quarterly payment for last year.
Right.
Okay.
So has that been...
So what did we get for a total for the year 2018 from Swenson?
Well, I didn't start the Excel spreadsheet until this fiscal year. She was going to email me because on the stubs, it doesn't give her enough room in the memo to put cubic.
I don't care about the cubic. I'm wondering how much for this year we, how much money we got from Swenson Corey.
Total.
Total, yeah.
Is it in the sheet?
It's not. There's only two funds in that.
Okay, and it doesn't show that.
Yeah, because we were...
It doesn't show the other 14, well, the other 12 funds.
So if this was a quarterly payment, are the other quarterly payments similar?
Roughly the same.
Roughly the same, so...
Some fluctuating by like 200, but...
So for...
So technically, we've only received about 16.
So about the $28,000 that we kind of estimate. Okay.
Okay. Great.
Good guess.
I transferred $10,000 today to cover expenses from the money market, leaving us with $2,496.53 in checking.
Still got plenty more money in the money market.
Yeah.
Yep. You have to serve until first of the year again.
Or till...
The next budget.
Till November or something.
October.
Till we're tax over.
Yeah. Listers promised to have their stuff done on time this year. I don't have any questions. I had mentioned to Brandy, I had asked Brandy to print out, you know, any surplus funds, surplus money. And so Brandy did print out a document that indicates that there are surplus funds available. And this would help to further any tax increase that we, that might be anticipated. So I believe that once we get the actuals from fiscal year 2019, we can take a look at this snapshot in time, which was today, I think, Brandy, wasn't it?
This was as of June of last year.
June of last year.
Ending of June last year.
June of last year.
Showing the revenue.
So... Okay.
Once liabilities, yeah, are taken away.
So you're anticipating what kind of numbers for leftover?
For this fiscal year?
Yeah.
No.
No anticipation yet?
Nope. I wouldn't even want to guess.
Right. Last year, last fiscal year, it was, what, $135,000 roughly?
Correct.
Really?
Yeah. That's why it would be premature to speculate.
Right, yeah, you never know.
With this winter?
Yeah.
Yep.
What Brandy also did, this is part of our discussion later, was to compile and print out four funds in the school districts, building maintenance reserve fund, you know, that had been earmarked, you know, to replace the roof. So this shows $96,000 sitting in that reserve fund for building maintenance. So since we now have concrete proof that the town owns the building, we should, and this will be another discussion later on, we should move forward with sending out our RFP and moving forward with doing that move this year.
So you don't think that the board has sent out the RFPs yet?
They've not.
No.
They've not?
I sent an...
They're on the back, they won't, because we own the building.
Yeah.
Right.
So...
Now it's just a matter of getting the handover so that it's...
Right.
The funds are in the town's, the board's hands, I guess, however you put it.
Yeah. We have a friend, the treasury part of the operation, so... We might be able to get...
Yeah, I thought about that. So those guys aren't going to do the RFP now because of...
Because they don't own the building.
Right. So it's a great RFP.
But if we can go, we have the building fund maintenance, and then if we can get, have the school board authorize the fund balance revenue left over from last year, then it should be plenty enough to replace the roof.
Yeah, the RFP is great. We'd have to, I think, I sent you guys an email...
Just change some of the wording.
Change some of the wording in it. Change some of the contact information in it. So, you know, the bones are there for sure.
That's good. It is time to start getting that out there because it waited too long last year.
That's what happened last year. It was too late.
Yeah. And if we do get a reprieve from the legislature for, you know, making the new union, we should jump right on this too. Get it done.
Okay.
I think so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Diana?
Hello?
Hello.
So here's the revised town meeting warning minus the article for...
The audit.
The audit. Alright, I'm ready for you to sign. The school portion has already been signed previously by them.
So did we strike the audit entirely?
Okay. Second one on the list, let's see, the sequence of events here.
Well, if you recall, at one of those school board meetings, Joanne suggested that we do the school business second, which usually we would because we sort of switch back and forth, and last year we did the school business first.
First, yeah.
But in order for anybody to get here from OSSU, she thought it would be better to do it second, so that worked out. I also took off the duplicative election of the school treasurer since she was already elected as the school treasurer last year. And Joanne seemed to indicate that the only reason it was on there was because she didn't know that Brandy had already been elected for a three-year term. And also the fact that the public doesn't elect the assistant treasurer, treasurer appoints the assistant treasurer.
Pre-town meeting, meeting.
Pre-town meeting, yeah. Well...
So that's queued up for...
28? 8, right.
At 6:30?
That Thursday night, yeah.
To 28, 6:30.
At the community room. I just have to make sure I get a key or some way to get in there because Brandy's gone that week. But it's approved as far as, you know, scheduling the room. Steve's on board.
Do we have to warn that two days or...
It's warned in the town meeting, the town report.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah. If you want to put anything else, you can put something on the website or...
We will. Look it on the website.
Will people get the town report by then?
We bet.
Okay, alright.
They need to get it 10 days before town meeting.
So where will you post that?
I'll give her something.
Something to place.
Something to post, right.
Why don't we put it on front porch?
Oh, yeah, that's gonna...
You can do that too.
I'll take care of that. I'll put it on Woodbury Connections. You don't need to give me anything.
It's okay. Okay. So that brings us to the subject of the town report, which is at the printers. And, you know, after much back and forth over the last couple of weeks and...
Sundays?
Everything's perfect.
Saturdays.
Yeah, Saturday's the week before last. Yeah, and we decided this year, or I decided, to have the printer do the mailing. In the past, when we tried that, it didn't work out very well because we ended up sending out more reports and didn't get any back when they go to the wrong address or if the person is not there anymore. So this year, I decided I would spend four hours one Saturday or Sunday and take the whole mailing list and make sure it's what they call householded, so only one is going to Brian and Judy Shatney. And although you might get two because I knew you'd want to have one for the office. Anyway, I'm not sure how I did that, but basically I weeded down the checklist from 700 to about three, little less than 400. And it's going to cost a lot less. So usually I would go to Barry and pick them up and bring them here. I was just remembering how you and Peter stopped by last year. They saw me loading in these boxes and they stopped to help. That was nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then spending a few days unpacking the boxes, putting the labels on, putting the stamps on, fighting with the post office over the postage, which gets worse every year. We really tried for years to give our post office the business so it would make it look like, you know, just pump up their numbers a little more, but it just wasn't worth it anymore. It was so hard. It was all going to have to go through hard work this year and so it'll cost less. So I expect to see that fairly soon.
Good.
And you're going to be surprised when you see the picture on the cover.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Is it a beaver?
No. Michael took the picture.
Michael's standing on a beaver dam.
Michael going in the mud up to his waist. Now, that would have been good, but you probably don't have any pictures of that.
You know, my brother just sent me a card. It was my birthday a few weeks ago, and he sent me a card, "There's a beaver lodge." That's like a photograph, and then there's sort of a cartoon picture of a beaver sitting on top of the lodge with a mug of beer. It's a great card.
No, it's your picture of the turtle walk.
Oh, okay, with Kylie.
Very, very colorful and...
Bunch of kids in it.
Everybody's happy and...
Nice.
Yeah, it's nice.
Be a nice color.
Yeah. So next, any more questions about the town report or town meeting preparation or anything? I'll probably need some help the day before Monday. Laura, hopefully you can come and help set up the school, and Larry will get the chairs all in place.
Is he retiring or...
I heard the same thing you did at that meeting. There were kind of a few whispers, yeah. Don't start any rumors.
He has been a long time.
He must be retirement age.
Aren't we all?
Yeah. We keep working. Probably not you.
I have a question, not related to the town report or town meeting, but we had talked about appointments last...
Yeah.
Are you making calls or...
Did I say anything? Did I say I would do anything?
I think you said you would.
You said we'd make calls, yeah.
I called to a couple of people, I think I said that.
Well, did we go through, I think we kind of went through a list and there were...
We did, yeah.
Yeah, and we were going to call different people on the...
You don't have to call me. The planning commission will have me.
Yeah, no.
Sometime before town meeting, I'll do that.
Okay.
So the meeting last week with Lauren Oats and Claire Rock from DEMHS and CVRPC was really nice, was a good meeting.
It was.
And I was hoping that by now we would have some kind of an estimate from our engineer to plug in the number of how much it's going to cost to do the whole stream back restoration so then I could put it, put the last couple of numbers in the grant application and have you sign it, but that didn't happen. So that's all I'm waiting for. She did sound like the additional money that we're going to need is not a big deal. She even said, you know, make sure you request enough. When I first did this, there was this whole, I mean, this four, what, four years ago? Five years ago? There was this big calculation that was going on. They had to be able to show, or we had to be able to show that there was enough losses to offset the amount of money that was going to go in, so there was a...
Ratio or something.
Yeah. But I guess it worked out well enough so it doesn't matter if we need another $100,000 or so.
And she did say to arrive at a figure, then factor it by a factor.
Yeah.
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
She said be conservative, and I said, do you mean like, they said, you don't mean like be thrifty? No, she didn't mean that. She meant make sure you ask for enough.
But we have to be aware too, that the more money we get from FEMA, the more town match.
So we need more, yeah. Hopefully it won't be much more than what we've estimated so far. So I need to have somebody, the last signatory for the grant was Guy DeWelle, so if you guys would appoint somebody else to be the signatory for future, future versions of the application. I can't nominate, Michael, I'm not a board member.
I don't know if we need nominations.
I'm happy to do that.
And thank you so much for shoveling off that roof. We're done today, it's starting to show some bear spots.
That brings up a point. I pretty much destroyed my scoop shovel. Would the town be willing to reimburse me for buying a new one? About $50?
I think that would be fair.
I think it would be fair.
Thank you.
Maybe you should just buy one and take it out of petty cash or something.
Uh-huh, okay, whatever. I'll talk to Mary. Yeah, it's pretty well split up and busted, so...
At least you're not split up and busted.
No.
You didn't fall.
I was a little sore the next day.
Yeah, I was sore. You didn't climb up on the roof though, did you?
Of course I did. How else would I have...
Oh, man.
Good thing Skip wasn't there, he would have been calling the insurance company.
Well, it was nice. He would have called Passit and said, get this guy off the roof.
I was a volunteer, so there was enough, you know, there were layers of rain, ice, snow, so that I just left the bottom layer on, so I had plenty to crunch my boots into.
Yeah, but if that structure had collapsed underneath...
Oh, well, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, the roof, you know.
Better pitch him out of the basement.
I didn't shovel off the part that had already collapsed. It's like a big crater.
You were able to stay away from that, good.
Yep.
Yeah, so then I got this email the other day from Linda Elliott. The people that they hired to do the Phase 1 and the survey, all of a sudden want $1,800 more because they realize the survey is going to be difficult. I said, so grow, that, you know, is that how this works? Somebody put two people, two companies put in a bid, and the one that gets the bid then gets to ask for like a 30% raise? That's not right.
Chumpy.
Not, I mean, I should have pointed out the fact that doing the Phase 1 another time is not going to be any more than reviewing a bunch of reports that have already been done.
Right, for just a couple of years.
So...
How can they do that?
I don't know. I didn't hear back when I asked Linda those questions because I, because, well, Claire made her...
Is Linda going to be paying for that?
Well, it's coming out, she said the BRELLA fund was a little light, so they wondered if FEMA would maybe pay for that, but we asked Linda, asked, no, asked Lauren that when they first came out with the request for a survey, and it was a BRELLA request. And Lauren said, no, we're not paying for any more testing on that site. So, so, but anyway, she made it clear at that meeting that under that, even the Phase 1 stuff, none of that was required by FEMA. It was just, we needed to do it to get the clean site letter, which was required by FEMA. So all that, and the BRELLA, of course, is totally separate from FEMA because that's just some insurance, liability insurance to protect us if anything else shows up.
That was pretty inexpensive, that was $100.
Yeah, it was $500, and we're getting a Phase 1 out of it. Phase 1 and the survey, the first estimate was like $6,000. Okay, anything else?
Yes. So also at the meeting, Diana presented this project schedule. I don't know if you could share that with Brian and Michael? So it lays out, you know, a proposed schedule all the way through project complete, October, November, sometime this year.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's, it's pretty exciting.
So when we'll submit the, I guess, the formal application to FEMA for the project?
Yeah, a budget, you know, an amendment for...
An amendment.
A larger budget.
Yeah.
That's scheduled for February, March.
She's suggesting, as she mentioned...
And that's what Lauren felt, that we would hear back from them?
She did say that it would be nice to get it by the 15th, so if I do get any information from Dawn this week, could I have Michael sign that?
Pester him.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Sign it and get it right in.
Yeah.
Okay, and she said that the two main things that FEMA needs are a clean site letter, which we have, and a clear title, which I'm going to contact Sarah and have her get to work on that. That shouldn't be hard.
And part of this timeline naturally is the building demolition.
Yeah.
So at our last meeting, we selected the low bidder, Blue Mountain Construction, Drygate. And so here's a draft of the agreement between the town of Woodbury and Blue Mountain. So I believe I sent this out to you guys as well in the recent past. So this is an amalgamation of Paul Gibbly's initial draft and some of the edits that I put together. So the only thing really, I believe, that has to be done with this is agree upon a payment schedule that we're going to give Blue Mountain excavation or construction, you know, any upfront money. And then when the project is complete, you know, what is, what is project complete? You know, how do we define that? And that would be the final payment.
Completion of removal and cleanup, it says. But it could be more, it could be more than three payments. It could be upfront payment, and then it could be, you know, they're going to need to pay the asbestos contractor, that's $40,000. He doesn't want to wait till the end of the whole thing because that'll be a couple of extra weeks, so... So maybe you should run this by them and see what they think.
So you talked to him?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, I'll talk to him then.
That would make sense. When the contractor does his work, he's going to want it paid, so make sure that we can cut that check.
Yeah, initially, the asbestos removal has to be the first thing they do.
Right.
Do you think this contractor could also do the stream restoration?
I don't know.
We'd probably need to do a whole bunch of permitting first.
We do have to get a design and...
Yeah, they'll have to get everything else down and see what's left.
Right, and then whoever wants to, so the guys can actually come and look at the stream. And then whoever wants to, so the guys can actually come and look at the stream.
Well, yeah, we'll have to do another RFP because Don didn't think it was possible to do it all at once because they didn't know what to expect under there. You're the only one that's been under there. Even though everybody has seen your pictures.
I'll leave it to work with.
And I also wanna check part three here. Check with Brandy on insurance liability. That may be more than we need.
That's true.
I think we have something. They must have been showing us something with their bid.
Yeah, they did.
Did Paul Willis come up with that figure?
He may have. This is a pretty straightforward contract. Get rid of the asbestos spurs, knock it down, bring it to grave.
Yeah, because, yeah, they might need to have more. I mean, if the asbestos contractor is half of it, they might need to have more than that to start. You'd think they'd need something for themselves to begin with. So they can ask.
How flush this company is with cash?
I don't know.
Yeah, usually they, I mean, for some, you know, like the fire alarm thing, the guy wanted half of it at the beginning. When the other thing, we deal with the garage, and the electrician, you know, he wanted money for the materials before he started the work. So I'm sure there'll be some.
He was a little guy.
Yeah, he was a little guy.
We don't know how big these guys are. You know, that would be, that's not something that we put in for our bid form if nobody asked for monies upfront, but.
We don't know. We're, you know.
Trying to remember, did Lamberty ask for any money upfront when he did the Elsman Pond Road culvert?
I don't remember now.
Yeah, I don't remember either. I don't think he did. I don't remember that. Of course, he didn't, he didn't really, the culvert was, he wasn't, you know, getting charged for that initially, so. Yeah, okay.
If they ask about this, about removing all materials from the property, you know, what their response is gonna be for that. We did talk about whether, I did find out that it would be okay for them to put those cement slabs in the foundation when it's, you know, those slabs that are piled up along by the barn. Yeah, because that would be a whole lot of material they have to waste if you have to pay by the ton. So, and they were the ones actually who suggested it. That's why I followed up and called A and R, and they said we can apply for something called an insignificant waste disposal event.
Something that's not gonna decompose on.
Okay, so I'll call this gentleman. I'll call him this week, send this to him, and talk about, you know, payment schedule. Because he may, like you guys were saying, he may want to pay the asbestos contractor. Whereas I'm sure they're gonna look for the money once they're done.
This guy seems to be one of the smaller contractors that was bidding on this because the other ones were all bigger and more cash on hand. He may need some money to get going.
Yeah, he sounds very sincere, eager to get to work.
So when we go to the bank, we'll have to get money both for the purchase and, you know, the whole thing, I guess. It's not gonna, I mean, the interest rate's gonna be very low, so if we have extra for a couple of months, we'll pay it back when we're done. I want to have, I'm sure Brandy doesn't wanna keep going back to the bank. He said, we need another twenty thousand dollars.
She'd hunt this guy.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think that's.
Second, you got a crowd gathering. Didn't bring any road crews? Who's too proud? Two.
I'll be sure I see if you guys aren't doing any discussion I had here. About Blue Mountain excavation. All right, next up is Highway Crew Work Report.
So let's see. So the sand pile is in good shape. They go, you know, I know, I've been hearing that some towns are getting low on their sand, but we're in good shape with our sand.
See, you got a hell of a pile. Those, oh, we're looking at it. These guys put up a lot of sand last year. We had a lot of sand left over, so we're in really good shape.
Yeah, we're in good shape, yeah. I know Callis has put out a notice that they were.
Rationing.
Yeah, rationing their sand.
But you drive by and you see a mountain of sand there.
I really hadn't even noticed that. And so I still got a big pile.
And here's like, Peter is pretty much fully incorporated into the road crew. Tim and Peter are kind of splitting days, splitting hours, depending on when they're needed and what this.
Is it, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is it getting to the point now where we have two full-time road crew members and two part-timers? Do their hours equate to a third full-time person?
Pretty much so, yeah.
Do they need to be? That's a nice question. If there's a day where they're not sanding, could they say not have somebody in there? Just because, do they need a three-person full-time over there?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, like during the winter, when there's a break in the weather, whether, you know, there's a lot of maintenance work that goes on. So, yeah, I really don't know the thing as to. And in the summer, the summer, like this past summer, you know, usually Greg Parkers would have a part-timer with him, you know, doing any of the ditching and culvert work. And then Tim did a lot of the hauling of the sand, so, you know, so Tim would work a couple of days. Because day pipe was pretty much done by the summer. And then Robert Fair would pretty much work the grading and ditching and culvert work. And Greg Adams was grading the roads pretty much when Tim really could. So, yeah, that's a good, good question.
Yeah, because if they don't need to be there.
Right.
Just sitting around, waiting for it to snow. Just because we have two guys serving doesn't mean they need to be, have a three-man crew full-time because I don't think we're at that stage yet.
I think a lot of the maintenance work in the winter, you know, it's, I think Greg Parkers is thinking of having, you know, either Tim or Peter just involved, so they just started learning a little bit more about, you know, taking care of equipment and maintenance work. So, but I don't, you know, I guess we could look at the time sheets too and see how much, how much time they're spending there on the winter. How, you know, last grade like that. I know usually I do go down to these on Friday, usually it's just grading, Greg will be there. Kind of wrapping up the week and.
Yeah, I just want hope that they're not having them there just for the sake of having them.
No, no.
If they're not necessary, then two men of crews enough some days.
Yeah, yeah. I think if they're there, they're busy, so. I'll check with Greg about that. So the trees on Azur Road are down on the ground, so that's, that's behind us now. No more comments on that.
Those are Mike McGlin's trees, correct?
Yes, they are now his trees. I was starting to get communication from V-Trans and stuff about the municipal roads general permit, you know, kind of anticipating the coming summer work for the year. There was a whole slew of things that I haven't looked at yet from Shawna Clifford from V-Trans.
Did you see that today?
Yeah, actually, I received that about a week ago or so, and you sent it to me, and Diana sent it to me too. So I've got three rounds of it that have come in.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
No excuse.
So, um, so I thought, you know, we, and then we usually have an annual meeting with Shawna where we kind of go over the amount of mileage of class two, class three roads we have. And that's, you know, gives us the amount that we get from V-Trans. I'm gonna ask her, talk to her a little bit about a paving grant. I'm thinking ahead for the upper Cavit Road now that we have a substantial amount of money in the paving fund. To maybe, to maybe look at that again for, probably not this coming summer, but maybe the following summer. And thinking also that maybe we would have the grant and, you know, implementation work for the other side of the road on Valley Lake Road with the school, so that the paving could all be done at the same time. I think we have enough money in the paving fund right now to pay for those two projects, so.
We just saw that it was forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand, yeah.
Yeah, the acre into the school and then the.
Yeah, and then down to Route fourteen, you know, by the new old store. So I know Brandy and I looked at the town report from a few years ago when we tried to, when we had in the, in the budget for that year to do the paving on the upper part of Cavit Road to the quarry. And the estimate at that point for the town's match was twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. And I remember that there was a figure for the, you know, the Valley Lake Road up to the school. I don't trust my memory to remember exactly what it was, and I can't find any information about it. So I'm tempted to go down in the town garage and just go through all the old files.
I'm pretty sure that they gave us a number.
Yeah, there was, there was a number. Yeah, we did. So, and then we, you know, we got a bill for our annual municipal roads general permit, a thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, and there's also kind of a sign-on sheet. This appears like every year we'll be signing up for it somehow. So, and Greg has a list that he started for summer road work that we're kind of going over. So probably anticipate doing another municipal roads general permit grants made. I still have to do the report for last summer's work, but it's kind of getting to the top of my list now, so. I have until July first to get it done, so I've been procrastinating a little bit.
Any big bridges, culverts, road re-dos that you know of?
Nothing, nothing really that I can think of. I do, when I talk to Shawna, I wanna try to find out about who to ask for doing another inventory or for guardrails, because that's, again, that's another piece of information that I know that we used to have that seems to be missing. Harry definitely had something that he was working from for different projects for the guardrails. He had a list.
Oh, of places? I'll ask you.
But, you know, like Sherry, hell, I know, is kind of on the list to do some work on on the bottom part of Foster Hill Road. We did the upper part last year. So, and then there's a culvert on Bailey Bridge Road that's in pretty sad shape. That would be a fairly major project.
It's been hanging around for a couple of years now.
Right, yeah. Somebody came and looked at it last year and said it's not an emergency yet, but it's definitely, it's something to think about in the next few years. So I wanted to talk about the Highway Paving Reserve Fund. You know, we know that there's forty-two thousand dollars in it right now. At some point, I'd like to have us determine an amount that where, when we get to that, to have like a cap for it so that we can kind of pull back from putting some of the Swenson Quarry money. We put twenty-five percent per year of the Swenson Quarry money, which is about seven thousand dollars, into the paving fund. And pretty much all of the money in the paving reserve fund right at the moment has come from Swenson Quarry. So, you know, my thinking is, I'd like to research a little bit more, get an estimate for what the paving for the upper Cavit Road would be. And that would be a town match for paving grant. What we would do is apply for a paving grant for that. And then also, and then get an estimate at the same time for the Valley Lake Road part with the school so that we have a sense of how much money we need. And I would like to try to do this before we actually do the, the final budget for taxes.
Sure.
So that we would, if we were to, if those two projects would come underneath the forty-two thousand dollars that we would have now, I would really like to take the twenty-five percent that we have designated for the paving reserve fund for fiscal year twenty and put it towards the highway budget to try to bring that budget down a little bit. It would be seven thousand dollars based on the twenty-eight thousand dollars that we, you know, seem to be receiving every year from Swenson.
So many other, Michael, are there grant monies available to pave that upper Cavit Road?
Yes, that's what we, when we had the project proposed, that was, V-Trans has a paving grant that they, so what we would do is get an estimate for the whole project, and it's, I think it's a, I can't remember if it's eighty percent, twenty percent, or if it's seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent. But that figure that I mentioned, when we were gonna do that project, the twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, that was the town's match, that was the whole project.
The upper and lower Cavit?
No, just the upper part.
Just the upper was twenty-eight K?
I would imagine that, you know, that it'll be more because, you know, we're four years down the road. But so I'm kind of thinking that, and this is what I wanted to ask Shawna, is that we would apply for a paving grant for the upper part of the Cavit Road this year, get that estimate done so that hopefully before, before the tax rate gets set, we would know how much, we would know that we got the grant for one thing, and we would know how much our match would be. And we would also have an amount for the bottom of Valley Lake Road. And if it's not, if it's not enough, the forty-two thousand dollars that we already have, then that money from the Swenson Quarry will go into the paving reserve funds, and that would put us up roughly to about forty-nine thousand dollars.
But we have an RFP that we propagated for the lower Cavit Road. I could change that around if you want and do some measurements for the upper part of Cavit Road. Now, that's pretty simple to do.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Would you like me to do that?
Sure, yeah. So, and so seems like, does the select board think it's worth trying for that paving grant this year?
I do.
Well, I do, you know, because if we can divert some of those monies from going into the paving fund and just sitting there until we decide to use them, into something that's more usable, to the highway fund, you know, I think that's a great way to go.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, if we were awarded the grant this year, I think we have, we wouldn't have to do the work, this is another question for Shawna, if we wouldn't have to do the work necessarily this summer, we could wait and do it next summer. I think that's kind of how that paving, the paving got done.
When's the grant due, Mike?
I don't know. I'll have to look at it sometime this spring, I think.
Yeah, we still got time. It'd be nice to get it done if we can because, you know, we're not gonna have to do any work on it. Yeah, once it's put out, it's gonna be the contractors that do it, so it's not a road crew thing for this part.
And the thing that, you know, if it's done, of course, then our, our Road South budget will probably gonna double. That's what we had planned on when we were thinking that that would have gotten paid.
But there is, the other side of it is, we're not gonna be gravelling that road. So there's a savings, it's not all expense when you do that.
We're not spending time grading it.
Yeah, no time grading it.
Is there any need for guardrails? Part of the lower, the lower Cavit Road RFP was to install guardrails.
Right, and they were installed.
There is a place between Wackelodan and Janus's driveway. There's no guardrails across from the cemetery. There's a few places up there that.
Yeah, right before the road going up to Danus, that's definitely a good draw.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be a bad idea at the same time to put some guardrails in.
Those are not magic.
Culverts are. We could, we could use a culvert.
This probably wouldn't go in, probably the money that pay for this, it probably would be the fiscal year twenty-one budget. So if we're planning on putting guardrails in, we could, we could.
So Michael, do you want me to do one for Valley Lake Road too?
Sure, yeah, yeah. I don't, I remember that you had a special pavement mix because of the granite trucks. So I don't know if we should do that on the other side too?
I did, Betuminous Concrete.
Right.
Yeah, so it was a special paving mix.
A special paving mix. I know you researched it.
The guy at V-Trans retired, so there's gonna be a new person that I can torment.
Yeah, the other side, you could say, isn't getting in, is gonna be getting into the big truck traffic like that. Occasional fire truck.
Yeah, yeah.
School buses.
Yeah, town trucks.
Town trucks, yeah.
So, that's part of, that's part of that thirty percent engineering that's part of this letter, I'm presuming?
I, I assume that, that either the paving would be, I think, actually, it could be part of the design, we'll have to talk to the, whoever's going to be doing the design work, we could definitely request that that be a part of the design, makes sense to do.
Yeah, it does.
The design work, most of, for this is the implementation of the different erosion controls, but there's no reason that we couldn't request that that be a part of it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think it was my questions about. So, we'll definitely get on the, the paving grant, contact Shawna about that. I think, I think, you know, usually, I remember Harry saying that there was kind of a three or four-year kind of recycling of paving, like, you know, if there are just different towns that ask for paving grants every year, it's usually not such a sure bet that they'll get them, but, but if you're somebody who frequent, infrequently requests, usually, usually you get it.
We haven't requested any paving for.
Not since the lower part of the Cabbott Road.
We don't have any paved roads to reinforce.
Right, we don't really have, yeah.
But we did find out that's a Class Two road, so it gives us more funding from the state, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that cuts down our share of it, so.
You weren't able to find the documentation that we had been submitted for the upper and for Valley?
No, no, I can't find the grants or, you know, whatever, there was an estimate for the lower, I haven't been able to find it. I'm going to go dig through the filing cabinets at the town garage, there might be something there.
Do a good cleaning out of it.
Right, go through everything. There's quite a few, there's at least two or three filing cabinets, I'm not sure what's in there by now, but.
Ask Terry if he knows where they might be.
Yeah, he might, he might know, might remember. So, the other thing on my list is, the last meeting, we signed a letter of support for full design work for the Kingsbury Branch Tactical Basin Plan. There were five priority sites that were listed, and Pam DeAndrea, who was working on the grant to get full design for those five sites, found out that she could only apply for one site with the grant, so, but then I discussed with Pam that, actually, the sites, there are two sites that are really sort of one project, so we managed to convince them that, to go for a full design for the two sites, the, the school parking lot runoff, and then the runoff from the school parking lot down to Catch Basin by the Fire Department Annex Building. So, so that necessitated a new letter of support, and it'll also bring down the, the grant cost.
Sure, yeah.
Well, because it's only two sites instead of five.
So, is the, what's the engineering cost? Initially, it was forty thousand?
Forty, forty-eight, forty-nine thousand, and now it's thirty-four thousand. So, and there'll be a ten percent match from the town, and that'll be less now too, so what, we should be easily between the road crew participation and my time should be easily meet that. But here, here's kind of a breakdown of the new, what the new grant would be for.
Shawna Brian signed this as well?
Yeah, let's all, all sign it.
Yeah, he's the official, yeah.
I guess so. So, the thinking is, is that the, the design work would happen this, this summer, and then, that's the issue, over the winter, and Pam has some ideas for people to approach, agencies to approach for their implementation, so with any luck, two summers from now, the work will be done, and the paving will be done, I guess, so.
So, Michael, I'll turn that hour a year round. When's your meeting with Shawna, or is that still after?
That'll be after town meeting.
Okay.
But I'm going to ask her about the paving grant, and I'll start working on the paving grant before, before then, just to kind of get a, a sense of, you know, whether or not she thought we would get the, we applied for.
It's been quite a while since, what did we, what did we pave last?
The lower part of Cabbott Road. That was three years ago? I can't remember either.
Boy, it seems further back than that.
It wasn't further back than that, the skip was on the select board then, so it would have been within your three-year term, so I would say three years ago.
That was my first RFP.
Right, right.
For the town, anyhow, my first parade into V-Trans and Betuminous Concrete Asphalt and the consistencies of it.
Your pavement research.
Made by Henspin.
Yes, it was three years ago, this, this coming summer, so less than three years ago, I'd already moved it.
And that road's holding up well, right? No cracks or anything anywhere?
Seems to be, yeah.
We did a nice job with a little parking area.
A runoff area, yeah, some new guardrails.
All right, I'll get on that.
And I'll, I'll do, I'll get ahold of Shawna and just get that grant started. That's it on my list, anything else?
Go ahead. So, you'll check with, with Greg, number one, to talk about part-timers and whether or not.
Right, yeah.
Whether or not they should be working as often as they do.
I'm pretty sure, I know what he'll say, but.
I'm sure, yeah. So, we have four minutes, so we're going to take a short break here, I'll be right back.
Hello, Dave here.
Hello, Dave, this is Michael Gray. People are kind of assembling around the table, and we're going to have you on first. We're mostly just kind of interested in an update from what's going on down in the House and the Senate about the putting off this mandated merger for a year, so I'm going to say.
That's great, Michael, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you okay, I'm going to set you on the table, and let us know if you can't hear everyone else okay.
That's, that's great.
Okay.
All right, you're on. Dave, can you hear us?
Yes, they can, hello.
Okay, so we have.
Thank you, thank you for accommodating me. Soon when the time change comes, I'll be able to drive at this time of night, so I hope.
Can you fill us in on what's going on in the House and the Senate regarding the year?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, let me start in the House. So, on the, finally, the second vote, by a very large margin, the House voted to grant extensions to the July two thousand nineteen deadline until July two thousand and twenty, not for all districts, but for most of them, most importantly for, for Woodbury. The bill now is on its way to the Senate. It's, it's very important, if I may suggest, for, I'm, I'm asking all the towns in the district, in your district, and on the other side, Callis, Middlesex, Worcester, et cetera, to reach out to Senator Andrew Felchuk. He is on the Senate Education Committee, and it's critical in order for this to have any hope, it's great to make it through the House, but if the Senate doesn't approve it, it will not matter. The Senate, as of yet, has not started to take any testimony on it. My hope is, because you folks are far more influential as constituents of the Senator than me, but I will also, in the building, ask him to help out and at least take up the bill and consider it, and he can go to his chair and make the case, and see what he can do, and he can also give you an accurate assessment of it. The, at the same time, one of the arguments, the First Amendment attempt we made failed, and one of the arguments was, well, the court's going to be hearing this on, I think, February fifteen, why don't we wait until then? We argued finally successfully that just because the court's going to hear it, it's not likely a judge will make a spontaneous or timely decision. The lawyers have explained to me that they're, they're, on the fifteenth, it will be what's called a summary judgment, where the judge will listen to the case and make a decision as to whether there's quote irreparable harm, end quote. It's a high standard, but he's not likely to do it right on the spot, he will take it typically under advisement. Now, should they fail in that, and the judge does not, if the judge grants an, an extension at that time, or a moratorium and puts everything on hold, that is good for those communities who need more time. If, if the judge says, no, you haven't met the standard, the court cases can still continue, they're just at a, at a slower pace whenever they come up on the docket. People that are, that are arguing, the court cases are quite optimistic. I'm not an attorney, I don't know, but they feel quite confident that the constitutionality issues are a way in their favor. Yet to be seen. Now, if I may, just going into the weeds a little bit, which I'm reluctant to do, you folks, as far as articles of association and requirements that you have, you need to work with your superintendent and the Agency of Education for interpretations as to what you can do. However, my understanding, the way we were briefed on this, is that if the extension goes through, and the Senate should grant it, or even the judge grants it, it allows communities to, they have to vote on it, but I think it's the, it's the boards voting, the two members for each town, and not all the masses of voters, on, on amending the articles, for instance, I think it's Article fourteen, down toward the bottom, you know, that's where somebody could say, look, I'm just giving this as an example, no school should close for at least the first five years, to give people time to develop relationships, do work, et cetera, to see how things are going to go. It, it, it gives the opportunity with the extension and the articles, my understanding is it opens up and gives more flexibility to people to work on some of these issues that are, that are most troubling for people. Let me pause there and come up for air and see if there are any questions, or if I haven't been clear in any ways.
Questions?
No questions for me.
I have a question. David, it's Diana.
Hi, Diana.
What, the things that are, that the court is being asked to do are pretty different from just an extension, aren't they?
Yes, they, they clearly are. The court cases would overturn it, but.
Oh, the whole thing?
The, initially, though, the judge could say, I'm granting an injunction to put this all on pause, which would create, in a sense, an extension, though it may not be time-sensitive. He may say, stop, I think there could be harm, I want to hear these cases, don't go on any further, that's a possibility, but Diana, you're right, they're, they're asking to overturn it.
So, if the judge overturned the whole thing, then we can just kind of figure out who owns what and kind of go on our way the way oilers have. We wouldn't be forced to merger, is that the understanding?
That's, that's my understanding, but ultimately, it would depend on his ruling.
Right.
But yes, yes, that's, that's my understanding. The problem, as you may know, there's different deadlines, and the fear is that people, schools have to comply with the deadlines that are in the law now, so they might start, my word, unraveling or de-bundling and forming new boards, and it will be very hard to walk back from that once they start, but perhaps not impossible.
So, do you think that if the House and Senate gave the towns a year, that the judge would be able to, that this whole court thing could be resolved within that year? So, towns would know what to do?
I do, I do, yes. I, I, I do think that is a possibility. As Diana said, the judge is going to do, is ultimately, I'm going to back up a little bit, one of the arguments was, if you guys, House and Senate, vote for an extension, well, then what does the judge have to do? You've already done it for the judge, but, as Diana pointed out, the judge is considering doing even more than that.
Well, if the judge goes really far, then this could end up going to the Supreme Court, right?
Well, that's the, assuming that they takes it there, yes. I'm not sure they would, but that's, that's to be known, they could appeal it.
Dave, this is Stephen Murphy, hello.
Hello, greetings.
Yes, Dave, I've read what I think was the bill that passed the House, and I didn't see, I didn't see any language in there that would change the authority in, in amending those Articles of Agreement. You mentioned earlier that perhaps the authority would change from the electorate and give the, give the decision to the board, can you, do you have that language, or can you explain that a little bit more, please?
It's an opinion from the Vermont School Boards Association and the Legislative Council. I, I, tomorrow, I can cut and paste that and send it to you, Stephen, that'd be helpful.
Great, thank you.
It lays, it lays it all out, yeah.
Any, any other questions?
So, it sounds like we should call our senators, or email our senators?
Absolutely, call, email, yeah, people need to do that. If he doesn't hear from people, he won't be, I, I'm not, I'm not disparaging him at all, but he's, he's inclined to have other, other challenges to work on. He needs to know that this is top priority, means a lot to you, and there's other towns in the same room, which is a good thing. He's got four or five towns in Washington County, all in a similar predicament. And it's, it's not just him either, it's Senator Polina and Senator Cummings, but they're not on the Education Committee. Andrew is, and he can, so it's more timely, but I, I, I would email them also, saying, please help us, and anything you can do. And I, I will be talking to the other towns, asking them, I'll be talking to the legislators of the other towns, asking them to do the same thing with their towns, should get them to call in as quickly as possible, they're strength in numbers. We started in the House at quite a disadvantage, there were only about twenty-five of us in this matter, too, and we, we ended up, we ended up succeeding, so if people take the time and listen, I think they'll be sensitive to it, I hope so, at least. Is this helpful?
Yes.
Very helpful, yes.
Very much.
And thank you for all your work pushing on this for the last few weeks.
Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome, it's been a lot of fun. We weren't talking to the students, but, oh, valid, yeah. Well, folks, I'm happy to come anytime when the, when the weather breaks, I share it with Michael on the site, I can't drive at nighttime, but when that changes, I'd be glad to pop in in person, March or April, at, at any time, go over any issues.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Okay, have a nice evening.
Great, thanks for your time.
You too.
Bye-bye now.
Bye-bye. Phone work.
Our low-tech ten-year-old phone.
Yeah, that was pretty well timed.
That was very clear.
Yeah.
So, task to do is to call Anthony and Ann Cummings and Andrew, by the sounds of it.
Yeah. And maybe get word out for other people to call too, besides just those of us that are here in the room.
I put something on Facebook, Woodbury Facebook Connections, a couple of weeks ago, with, with all the email addresses for those, both the House and Senate, there was a bunch of people who made comments, some of them said, oh, we got to do this, let it go forward and whatever, but anyway, those email addresses are there, and if anybody wants to chime in there and say that they would think this is a good idea, that we're just asking for an extension, not saying that it's necessarily a bad thing, but too many details to be worked out in a couple of months, and.
Yeah, another year would be very beneficial, I think.
You can do things much more gracefully, instead of doing things so quickly, mistakes are going to happen, like the Articles of Agreement, mistakes happened in that, where they didn't consider that towns owned their own schools, buildings, and land, you know, consider that towns owned their own schools, buildings and land, you know, they, they believed that the school districts owned them and that was a fallacy in some cases, like Woodbury's case.
Yeah, or Callis.
Callis, yes.
So there are other towns besides us that have found that the towns actually owned the building.
Callis, those two.
Yeah, I was a little, well, that's a whole nother topic, but the Attorney General's article in the Gazette about, or just a statement about ownership of buildings.
I saw that.
Yeah, that's a very big piece, seventy pages of reasons why.
So in the article, it refers...
You should read it, I just got the Gazette yesterday, so I just...
But that's, he's representing the state?
Sure.
In the court cases, so...
He says the state owns everything.
Yeah.
But the way the headline, headline makes it sound like if the Attorney General said it, it's, you know, that's the way it is, but it's just the state's side of the case.
It's important to read that side. I mean, it's important to know what's, because I was unclear of that anyway. I don't know what's...
It's like the OSSU's attorney, it's good to read what he's thinking, which I don't agree with for the most part. And, you know, I believe that you folks, the Woodbury School District, should engage some sort of legal advice other than Mr. Tuie. That's just my opinion.
I should've asked Dave if there's any chance that the senate might decide before our big meeting on the nineteenth, but I forgot. Probably unlikely, because next to...
They're, they're meeting on the fifteenth. I mean, he, there's something that will be...
The court case.
The court case.
Oh, that's the court case, but that's not the senate vote.
No.
Yeah, I don't know how long it takes them to get something on their calendar, but everybody should know that on the nineteenth is the big meeting for all the three, four school districts at the Hardwick Elementary School, and they'll be electing a moderator and deciding a few other important things.
So that's kind of a, I think we should put in not only about, on Front porch forum and Woodbury Connections, but get out locally and, or send to, to senators and also go to the meeting. I mean, there's a bunch of stuff.
Okay. So part of this is next steps, okay? Let's presume that the senate doesn't move this forward and we're left with what we have now. So I don't know if you guys have an agenda on the agenda, I think I sent the agenda to you.
There are some printed up.
On the counter.
I kinda ticked off what I believe is the next steps, you know, and even if the senate does agree with the house and the governor signs it, we should act on this, you know, as soon as we're practical. So number one would be purchase for the fourteen acres of the wetlands that we know that the school, Woodbury School District owns. So however that's going to happen, we should move forward with that.
That's on our next agenda, item two.
So the town of Woodbury Select Board is very anxious to purchase that, so however that can happen, we'd be happy to purchase that.
Purchase that?
Yeah.
Would we give it for a dollar?
Just something like that, you know, just...
It's not in the budget.
Whoever makes the deal.
I know it's not, I know it's not in the budget, but suffice to say that, you know, we are very anxious to get a hold or to purchase that and use it for recreational purposes or something like that, Michael.
Hopefully use it for what it's being used for right now.
Right, exactly, yeah, no change. And so however that happens. The second, to me, the most, second most important item would be to settle on a lease for not only the fourteen acres, but also buildings, library, that building which houses the community room, and come to terms with the language that allows it to continue as is. Any questions or comments on that?
I wonder if there's been any, any rewritten draft of that lease at our last select board meeting, I believe, I'm sorry, the school board meeting, Joanne, so that would be exchanged between the attorneys?
That's been shared.
Yep.
With the OSSU and I believe it was shared with Sean Tuie, their, their attorney, and he wrote back a missive, which I don't really agree with. So, you know, I don't know where it stands, I haven't seen his draft or his edits to that draft lease that we sent them, it's been like two, two and a half weeks now.
I haven't sent, I haven't seen anything from him in that form of editing of that lease, or any even new lease, but I would expect that we would need more from him or whatever.
Well, I don't know, would we?
Well, I don't know, I'm just speaking, like, if there is a, is a point of view, I would imagine we're gonna have that conversation with, at our next board meeting about that.
Did you receive his, his email, which...
Yes.
Ticked off his...
Joanne forwarded that to us, yeah.
So he has his point of view and I'm sure Joanne shares that as well. I don't necessarily agree with everything that he said in that email, and, but he's, he's representing the OSSU, he's not representing the Woodbury School District, nor is he representing anything to do with the town of Woodbury.
Can I ask what the, what the quarrel was about or what the issue was about, what he disagreed with? I saw at one point a draft of the lease that you sent to me.
Right, and I don't have that in front of me, he just...
I have a copy of it somewhere.
It's unclear to me who has the authority to say whether or not a lease is even possible.
Different people have different opinions, that's the hard part.
You don't know either?
No. Yeah, he didn't say, I think he said in his, I'm just trying to remember back, that a lease would not be workable.
What a lease between the town of Woodbury and the new district?
And the new district.
I see.
Would be untenable, and they would not enter into a lease. So to me, that was kind of a threat.
Kind of a threat, was it? And they would basically shut down the school right from the get-go.
So I wonder if that... That assumption is under the default articles of agreement?
He, he is quoting quite a bit of the default articles in that statement, which...
But we've had other, I mean, we've, we've heard other point of view about that, whether seeming that it is legal.
Right.
So it seems that we need counsel on our behalf.
You do.
It seems like, so we, when we last had our meeting, we agreed that we didn't need it.
Right, because...
But we hadn't heard from Mr. Tuie and blah, 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 so I think we, we need to re-look at that and we, if, hopefully, we now have a little, if, if the senate passes this, we have a little time. If not, we need to, well, we need to move along and that's what we're gonna be doing with our lease with you.
No matter what.
Yeah, with the town, mother.
So once this new district is formed as of February nineteenth, then are, will they be the ones that have to agree whether or not a lease is viable?
The transitional board, you mean?
Right.
It stays as until July one.
Yeah, no, the, no, I, because the school board, the Woodbury School Board, elected school board work, continues to work up until they...
Till July one.
Whether it's twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
Yeah. The others, the, the board that will be working, a working group, well, I don't know how, how it's all gonna play out in, in terms of who, who's gonna be doing what, but it's, it'll be a budget group that will, that will move forward. The transitional team, which is made up of two members of this, of everybody's school boards, will be working on the, on a budget.
I know, we were thinking of trying to have a lease between the school board's district and the town for the remainder of this year, till July first, and then we'll see what happens.
So it seems that we need to get some further legal advice on whether it's possible, first of all, to have a lease between the town of Woodbury and the new district. That's number one. Number two, how do we arrange that? And then number three, see if we have some agreement from the other towns, if in fact we need to amend the articles of agreement. It seems like we have three steps ahead of us here.
I think initially, though, Stephen, we should have a lease between the town and the existing school.
I agree.
Right, and that's, that's number one, because understanding now that we own the building, the town owns the building, everyone here except for, or owns the building, you know, and we have to move forward with that.
And that...
You know, and that, that to me is step number one, and then whatever happens, happens, you know, 'cause we, we, the board cannot sell any town assets, something as large as that, without first having a meeting with voters. It has to be a board meeting and there's, there's statutes stipulate, you know, mechanics of doing that, and so we have to do that as well. So but first, I think, between the board and existing school district, and then see what shakes out.
Will they give time to have that roof replaced?
We will, that's, that's next.
As long as in the lease, this lease with the school board is active and hopefully signed, stating that over the building maintenance and the excess fund balance that was left over from the previous fiscal year.
You guys are gonna have to work on the budget.
Well, we still don't know definitively about that as, from our, I mean, we heard back from Joanne about that, from the attorney, from Mr. Tuie, I guess, again.
There was a cap of only eighty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not a matter of, these are funds that have already been raised through taxes. This is not a matter of, um...
Fair market value.
Fair market value. This money is already raised and it, and it's sitting there. It's not a matter of, we have to re, we have to pull this money out of, out of pockets, again, the money's there and...
Right, I understand that.
It's already been voted on for the use of the building maintenance by the voters.
So when I, when I read that lease, I've read it a few times, the one that you've edit, you suggested that we look at and, or no, it was actually a, Patrick Flood proposed a lease, which you, I'm looking at you because it looks like you're the only one that actually edited or made corrections on that.
Patrick worked on that.
Oh, okay. Would, we, we would be writing into this lease, possibly, that those funds would be used...
Would be handed over to the town. So the building ma, the building maintenance...
So it's under building maintenance and...
It's a reserve fund.
Yeah, but I guess I was wondering whether we, we would need to make it be a rent. I mean, I guess I'm not sure.
That's what Joanne was talking about.
She was suggesting this, yeah.
Right, but it has nothing to do with market value, it's not that the town's trying to...
Well, there's some confusion there, I'm not, I'm not sure that I understand that correctly.
Brady pulled a report today that indicates there's ninety-two thousand dollars in the building maintenance, and that's a reserve fund, and by statute, that should be utilized for that express purpose. If it's used for anything else, it's up to the voters to decide what that purpose would be.
But as a school board, that, you can make that decision, and with the fund balance, you can make that decision where you want that money to go. If it's turned over and we do have to merge, and then that pot goes...
So could they make, could that decision be secret from a lease if they, if the school board still exists till July, June thirty-first?
Joanne seemed to think that it has to be in a way of a lease of, of us requesting the money, so it kinda makes it look like us looking bad, wanting money, and it, that's not it, the money's already there, the taxes have already been raised for it.
Right, she was suggesting that we, that we call it rent.
We would be using the money to replace the rent.
Yeah, she first, she suggested maybe the rent for the three months or whatever until July one could be a way to get our, to get our money back from the reserve fund, which made kinda sense, but then she started talking about, well, I mean, yeah, it is gonna look like it's a lot, but if everybody knows it's just getting our own money back, you know, they're not gonna say, oh my God, Woodbury's getting thirty thousand dollars money.
You could put language in the lease saying that we're gonna release it to you folks for one dollar.
Right.
And with the funds that you have and, and the reserve fund, you know, you already have that money there and it's your money, it's Woodbury School District's money until June, until, until July first, if you read the articles of agreement. After July first or after June thirtieth, any monies in reserve funds and surpluses all go to the newly formed district.
You know, it's my understanding, though, the problem here is that the, a school district cannot make capital improvements on a property it does not own. I think that's the catch.
Well, that's why she came up with that idea about rental.
Yes, yeah.
Although they have been doing so for a hundred years, so, you know...
Norm.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Norm Metten, he's been weighing in on this, and he's got some great thoughts, and plus he's done this before, you know, he's, he's a wealth of information in terms of instances like this.
All I'd say really is, you're not gonna negotiate a lease here in an open meeting without, the people that need to actually draw the leases able to advise on that. It's a, it's a complicated legal situation, and I think the only real comment I'd make here is, yes, it's very clear that our school board needs its own attorney to look out for the, for their interests, which are the same as the towns really, in large, in large regard, but, you know, it, and yes, I've had some conversations about some, around some of the legal matters here and, and I certainly disagree with some of the advice of getting from, from the SU. So I think the school board needs its own attorney to make sure, work out on their behalf, because I hear a much different interpretation than what you're getting from, from the SU.
Sure. Can you recommend an attorney?
I wouldn't in an open meeting.
Pardon me?
I wouldn't in a meeting like this, no.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions about the lease too, if now is a good time. So a draft of the lease that I read, it's not, I'm a little afraid the library's gonna slip between the cracks here, so in one of the versions that I read, it said, and the Woodbury School District has use of the property every school day until five-thirty. Now you can look at that language and you cannot operate a community public library if the school district has sole use of that property during those hours. I guess I'd like to make it explicitly clear that the public library has the right to operate when the board of trustees sees fit. My other concern is there's no mention of memorandum of understanding in that lease that's currently held in effect between the board of trustees and the Woodbury School Board, and that will expire on June, July thirtieth, and it's not clear to me what will then happen, that's another gray area. So I feel like the fate of the library needs to be explicitly expressed in this lease, that's my feeling. I, I would be curious to know what other people think, but I, I think otherwise, there's no clarity behind that, so whoever then takes that lease over, there's, the library doesn't have a right to operate then.
Yeah, there is nothing in there that stipulates hours of operation for the library?
No.
Does it?
No. And it's also not clear to me what will happen with the memorandum of understanding that the trustees currently have with the school board, and that handles utilities and a whole complicated arrangement between using that space and operating mutually beneficially between the school and the library.
Yeah, I'd like to forward, you know, there's another town that had a similar situation and they, they created a lease situation, similar way of doing it, it covers all those kind of issues that get covered in a lease and that, and, you know, method for resolving disputes and all that kinda thing should be covered in, in any kind of lease arrangement, especially when it's complicated because of the library. kind of lease arrangement, especially when it's complicated because of the library and any other public uses. That's all gets covered in, in the lease, how that, how that's dealt with, and that, you know, that's what should be in there.
That would be great. I, I just wanted, like, and I, and I know it doesn't need to be complicated. I just want it explicitly, but...
I mean, overall, the situation's working fine. It hasn't been a problem.
Right.
And the question is just memorializing the, the current understanding that exists already, and putting it down on paper to make sure it survives the transfer if there is to be a unified district, that's all.
Right.
These are set in town, but I don't know.
So, we need a, and we need a little committee to work on the lease, because it doesn't gonna happen right here.
No, it's not.
Um, so, the suggestion was made, I think Patrick made it, was like, maybe, uh, representatives from the school board and the select board, and maybe the library, for sure, library, and work together on this lease now. I don't know whether, and then, where, what comes first, the legal, uh, help with that, and how we go about that. I'm not sure how that...
I think, starting off with a base, which we have started a base, meeting us, or finding an attorney, meeting once or twice, give him what we're working on, and then just start going from there.
Well, yeah, that, a meeting is, is, is required, but I think the, both of us should have represented, legal representation at that meeting, to see, okay, if we, if we come up with some, you know, stipulations in the lease that are totally outrageous and can't be supported, then we wouldn't even wanna go down that rabbit hole. So, you know, I think we have to, school board, select board, library, two attorneys, sit down and talk.
And it might be that the work you put into a lease might come to naught, but if you have it ready, then there's a possibility that it could be a decision that it can be done.
So, we're ready to go, while you guys are.
So, they really need, they really need an attorney.
Well, we're not, we're not meeting until the twenty-sixth of February. So, um...
Perhaps Patrick or...
Maybe we need, well, I don't know, but we'll have to do, we'll have to talk.
Yeah, well, just let us know.
Couldn't you have a little working group without having a special meeting?
Uh, no. No.
The short answer is...
Actually, I don't think so. Have a conversation with somebody.
Even if there's just one school board member and one select board member, one library member?
Isn't there a hike in the town forest this weekend? We've got a cool...
The trees here, nothing.
Yeah, well, my mittens are pretty big. I don't know.
It's gonna be warm enough, you won't even need mitts.
Oh, yeah, thirties, right.
Forties, I heard.
Okay. So, next steps are, um, get to work, because what we want to do is, do we need, well, I guess this is a question, do we need to have a lease before town meeting?
I don't think so.
Like a, no.
I don't think that's possible.
I don't, I don't either.
No, that's, that's...
Okay. But we will be voting. Will we be doing, we will, we may be, no, we won't be voting.
No, no.
If you wanna get, if you wanna have a, if you decide to have a meeting to vote on whether to use your, some amount of the surplus, is it for this FY eighteen, FY nineteen surplus, put that into the building fund, there might have to be a special meeting for that.
Which that was set, correct?
Well...
There was a special meeting to go on.
That was a whole discussion we have about whether we could get it into the town meeting warning in time.
No, it wasn't...
And it didn't work that way.
No. It wasn't...
No, what?
It wasn't gonna be able to make the ruling.
Right, right, that, that wasn't what worked.
So, it ended up being, well, it is on the twenty-sixth, isn't it?
The mart, of March...
You mean, for us to, I, I'm not sure that we, what, what is your recollection? Because I'm not sure that we...
The special meeting is on that Tuesday.
N, no.
Just set off, to approve.
No, I don't think, I don't remember even discussing that, for, as far as the roof is concerned.
No, keeping the extra money to be voted on. She was gonna get back to us, and it wasn't based on the twenty-sixth.
I don't know. That's our next scheduled school board meeting, but I, it's not a special meeting as far as...
It's just a regularly scheduled...
It would have to be after town meeting, because town meeting was gonna be too soon.
Right.
But there was a meeting set after town meeting.
No, I don't think that there was an actual date set. I think we just determined that we really couldn't have things prepared in time for town meeting, so we would have a special town meeting...
After.
Sometime after town meeting, but I don't think we really, there's no data established of it.
There's a meeting of the amendment committee set for March eleventh, and I believe I mentioned that at the last school board meeting. But beyond that, I, I don't know that there's another meeting set.
Not, not with a specific date, it was just...
Yep.
Well, yeah, it should, it should be one set, because we're losing weeks.
Right.
Now, it would have to be, you know, like, the third week in March, if it was decided this week. But I don't know whose job that is.
So, the, the school board wouldn't really be able to discuss hiring a lawyer until your February twenty-sixth meeting?
Uh, I think we have to agree on that, yes.
Right, you would have to agree on it, yeah.
Uh, not to say that that couldn't be nudged ahead by asking someone if they would be willing to work, but I think we have to, as a board. I mean, we'd have to agree to it as a board, right? I mean, then, but, um, yeah. In terms of who, I mean, those suggestions can come forward at the board, and...
Sure.
We'll see what we, what's just, what we can move along with more quickly then.
Do, do you think that we could establish, like, what we'll call a working committee for this lease with, at the next school board meeting? Would that be something that you would need to do as a board also, just to...
Oh, I think that we definitely would, would say, would make a decision on who would be, who would be willing to work on, as a, as a committee, members of a committee that would include somebody from the select board and the, and somebody from the, uh, the library committee, library.
The idea of inviting lawyers to come to a meeting that was really expensive, draft something and have them look at it, and then maybe come to a meeting after they go back and forth with their recommendations.
You know, I, I think, I think a group can meet and come to agreement on what terms you wanna have in the lease and so on, and like Hannah's saying, then that can be reviewed by attorney, put into form once they decide on, on picking one and so forth, but, but it's a, it's a meeting of the minds writing up, you know, what the existing agreements really are, is what you're talking about doing. So, you put, you have all the basis for that agreement there, and the lawyer's job is to put it in legal form, but you have a meeting of the minds around and, uh, about what should be in it, and then probably needs different levels of approval at, at...
Sure, yeah.
...board meetings or whatever, but the, but to negotiate and, and to decide on the draft, essentially, that accommodates everyone's understanding of what should be in it. I think that can happen prior to, you know, having, have lawyers involved.
Sounds logical.
And hopefully, we can maybe have the, a, a, a bit of a discussion at our school board meeting. I mean, it's on the agenda to, to get into a little bit more of what we wanna be, see on that lease, so that when we next have a, when we have a joint meeting, there's some substance we can bring to the table rather than...
Okay.
Yeah. I guess that's, we'll see it, but we'll see where we go from there when we meet.
Now, as far as this goes, do we, have you guys seen these? Request for bid for the roof for the roof?
Yeah, this is...
You've got some copies.
This is the one from last year, I think, isn't it?
From last year, yeah. I got my hands on that request for pricing for roof replacement.
I think it's just the RFP from, from last year.
Thirty-two page RFP.
Yeah, that was what we saw. That's the last one that I saw.
Right, and that's gone nowhere.
No. So, this is...
That's the same one. That's the same one. I just, I, the board hasn't seen it. The other members of the board haven't seen it, so I just, I just copied the first four pages of it, and I sent the entire RFP to the board, I think, today or last week. So, what I wanna do is get this RFP on the street and get some prospective bidders on it, because what I'd like to do is have it on someone's books that the roof gets replaced this year.
Right.
Because it's, to me, it's important that we utilize those reserve funds before they vanish...
Yeah.
Into some black hole somewhere. So, I'm gonna take a look at this, and I, Richard Pembroke, he's from OSSU, is he still over there?
No, no.
Okay. So, he was the contact person, and I'm gonna call Ian Lanfor, he, he was the, is the, was the project consultant, Garland Company? Never heard of the Garland Company.
Ask Larry, he would know.
Yes, and I don't know, I, I remember the name, but I don't know what, what, where he's, I mean, I know that he was gonna be the project manager, but I don't, or he was the one who was, I, I don't know.
The clerk of the works.
The clerk of the works.
Yeah.
But, Mr. Pembroke is gone, and we have John...
Did Larry Garland put together the RFP originally? Is he the project consultant?
Ian Lanfor, you know, this is a really comprehensive RFP, reading through it.
It was crazy big.
Thirty-two, that's okay.
Yeah. Didn't seem to think we wanted to work on something.
But one of the things that has to change is the project owner, and the project owner is now down as the Woodbury Town School District, and so that has to change.
So, that RFP, because it's something that, and I'm not sure, I'm, I'm like, our, our, um, the OSSU said they were working on getting a new RFP together. Is that your...
It's, I don't know.
Okay, but it's been in the...
They don't have to do that.
In discussion, it was brought up that.
Yeah.
It was dropped because they don't own the building.
But because they don't own the building.
Yeah, they don't have to do that.
Right.
But it didn't, the reason it didn't go somewhere last time was because the bids came in too high, or...
No, it was...
Somebody said that.
It was put out too late in the season, and they just figured that, you know, I don't know if they even got responses, or I don't think it even went out, did it?
We, we got one from Rod Roofing, I think.
Uh-huh.
And, and that's all.
I think Larry said the same thing. It went out really late, and all the other contractors had already signed on to the project, so it was...
Yeah, I remember his book.
Yeah, so we're, that's why we were thinking, we need to get this out pretty soon, just to get some competitive bids out there.
Absolutely.
So, we'll do that.
Okay.
Go on.
Okay. And another, another thing we should be concerned with is anything we do in that building, to that building, it's, it's, well, it's on the National Historic Register of Important Places, so we have to be certain that we're in compliance with whatever those stipulations are, you know, what can you do, what kind of roof do you, can you replace it with, you know, things like that. So, I'll take a look at that. I also took a look at grants from a couple of places, one in the state of Vermont. We are eligible for a twenty thousand dollar grant. Regrettably, grant submissions for this year were done last fall, so, but there is a grant out there for a project such as this that would give us twenty thousand dollars towards this. So, I, I've done that. I have a URL that someone could click on and just put an application, so it's for twenty thousand dollars, so there was lower, our out-of-pocket expense.
Is that, is that through some historic preservation?
It is, yeah. State Historic Preservation.
But...
Would that possibly be payable after the fact? Like, if the project was done?
Well...
I don't know yet.
You know, I...
There can be strings attached to those grants.
Well, there are, you know, because it's on the National Historic Register, there are strings attached, so you have to make sure that the contractor is aware of that, and, you know, if any changes to the roof line occur, or maybe there is some specific shingles that you have to use, or you can't use metal roofing, I don't, I don't know that.
And there might be strings attached going on into the future, too, after receiving that grant money. It's been my...
Yeah, as long as they keep giving money, you know, that's okay.
Right, but...
It's on the register, it's gonna stay there, so...
Yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking of my, you know, I used to work for a program in Harvick that where we bought the old firehouse, and we got a really nice grant to fix up the building, um, and then anytime we wanted to do any work on it, they had to give us the okay. Um, you know, so, there are strings attached into the future sometimes with, so, with the historic preservation, but...
So, did you say that that was a, that the deadline had passed for this year?
Yes.
So, if we're gonna be doing, we're hopefully gonna be doing this roof project this year, where does that look, leave us...
I haven't got that far yet.
Yeah.
All I know is there are monies there. Now, whether or not the, the grant award has to be coincident with the project...
Okay.
You know, we could suppose, or maybe extend the project timeline for completion into next year or something like that, so...
Do you know whether Liz Pratchett is in the state, or in Florida, or...
She's not doing that work anymore.
No. She's not...
She wouldn't even give us some free advice?
She's in the state, but she's not doing that, and she's not, doesn't...
But she's not, maybe not a consultant anymore, but she would certainly know the regulations. She might give us some advice.
Possibly.
Mary Jo is probably in, uh...
Idaho.
Yeah. But she's still, I have her email, so, she was always willing to help.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Are you gonna do your, this blackboard's gonna do the RFP, or look into that?
We are, now look into it, we are.
You're, yeah, you're doing it, okay.
Have that for the next meeting, when we meet with them, probably, or sooner?
Sure, I can have it for...
Twenty-sixth?
I can, I can have it by our next school, uh, our next meeting, which is the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Yeah. I could turn this around, I'll do it this week. I could have it to you guys Monday, at the latest. But we may need a new project consultant.
Raise your hand, Brian.
Very good, Pete, the clerk of the works.
Yeah, 'cause you're right there.
Yeah.
Just dwell in the yard once in a while, and...
Take a look right there.
Okay, they're looking good.
And so, we have to have someone here to whom the RFPs will be sent. Diana? Okay. Okay, that's all I need.
Just don't move it forward.
Anything else?
Okay, good. All right, well...
So, you guys are going to let us know about the charity, or...
Will any of you be attending the, the meeting on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, the school board meeting, oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, well, great.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And in the meantime, Brett, if you wanna put something together about, you talked about...
Yeah, that would be helpful.
You had talked about an MOU, you talked about...
Yeah.
Hours of operation...
Yeah.
And anything that concerns you that you might want in the lease, if you could put that together in a...
Yeah.
In an email and send it along to us, that'd be quite helpful.
Yep. I'll be at the next school board meeting, too, I'll bring that, bye.
Okay, great.
Yeah, maybe we can set those as decision items on the agenda. There can be some discussion, but maybe we can take action on decision over hiring an attorney and...
Yes.
Maybe a lease, if a, if a lease is in, in its form, or appointing members to a committee to form the lease.
Yeah, that would be action.
Okay.
I think we'll do anything actionable.
On the lease itself, but at least forming a committee to join with the select board.
And members of the public, I'm supposing, if they want to weigh in, you know, because it is a public building.
They're always welcome. Anybody, just come on down, you know?
Can I make a suggestion, though, about these school board meetings? Would you please publicly post your agendas and your meetings in place?
We do.
They are so impossible to find online, I find it so difficult to find either agendas or meeting times.
Agenda and meeting times.
How are we doing?
You guys are doing great.
Oh, good.
I can find them, I receive them, I know where to look for them, I can never, it is so difficult, and the only way I ever get them is I ask a school board member, or I email Tess, or Brandy, I just feel...
So we're doing it on Front Porch Forum, and we're doing it on Woodbury Connections.
They're often not posted on those sites, they're, or they're posted like a day or two before that.
Yes.
It is not sufficient time for people of the public to attend this meeting.
So where do we post them?
Or just posting them earlier.
You could just post them earlier.
Sooner.
I mean...
Send it to us, we'll put it on the Woodbury website.
That would also be completely useful.
We should have it on the Woodbury...
It's not on the school board website, so...
No, you're right. That's, okay, town website, and...
I think the school board meeting is on there, isn't it, Laura? Yeah, I thought you put it up.
And...
I get the, I get the emails from OSSU, and I just put them on the bulletin board out there, nobody looks there.
Okay.
That's what I do.
I would really appreciate that, and better communication would be very helpful.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
I don't do that, but Phoebe does, and she can do it quickly.
Yeah.
All right, great.
So while we're all here, any other issues, ways forward?
Norma, do you have anything more to say about, just thoughts about this whole situation in general, or... Well, I think that basically, you know, from what I know of it, it makes sense to do a lease that survives the creation of the union, and that memorialize an existing situation. It is an asset of the, of the school district, that they have this relationship and it's ongoing, and I think the stature allows for the assets of, the whole point is that the assets of the school district then become those of the union, and this is an asset of the school district. The fact that you didn't have this piece, we haven't found one, who knows if there was one at some point in the last hundred years, that, some kind of agreement between the two, but in absent the fact on, facts on the ground, or the facts on the ground, it's the relationship, and that's an asset, and it's moving forward, and that's what, once again, memorialized and should carry forward, that's my understanding of the situation, but again, I'm not a lawyer, need the proper legal advice to make sure that it's done correctly. That's my, my view of it, and, you know, I, you know, and that's what, the timing thing, you know, if they get the one-year extension, of course, it makes a lot easier. Without it, it means you really have to look at very carefully at what the timeline is, how much time do you need for the different warnings and different, what are the actions that need to be taken, and what, what would be the timeline, how much notice is needed for each, how much time is needed for legal reviews along the way to make sure everything can happen. If we have to stick to the original timeline, it's, as you know, it's horrendous, but, but even, even if you get the reprieve kind of, still, you need to make sure it's moved along as expeditiously as possible, which means you still need to create that timeline, and see how it can work, and, you know, it gets critical.
Norm, did you want to have an opinion about that 15-acre deal with the sloped land?
Sloped land, we don't call it that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, well, I'm sorry, well, I'm, I mean, when I brought you subject to the school board, the school board and the superintendent, everybody's, oh, that sounds doable, but then all of a sudden it kind of got dropped. Do you, school board members, think that that's being considered at all?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's on the, it's on our agenda for the 26th.
Okay.
I think there's other examples of towns that did similar things, Barry Town being one, you know, there's an asset that was transferred from, from the school district back to the town, because it's used for all kinds of town purposes, and in this case, my personal view of it is that, I think it makes a lot of sense to transfer it back to the town, I don't see any downside to transferring it, and it's hard to predict any future issues that may come up if it isn't, and as long as it can be done legally and correctly, and that's where you need the proper advice for that.
My only concern would be that the Woodbury School District is going away, so if the Woodbury School District owns that asset, and the school district goes away, that 14-acre asset is just up in the air somewhere.
Goes to the new district.
Well, that's why we want to sell it back to the town.
Yeah, yeah, so that certainly makes sense, and as I can tell, yeah.
So if we, if the town then owns it, as it does the buildings, it would need to be in the lease that we, we can use those, that acre of estate.
It is already...
That would be, that would make sense, yeah.
It's in the lease already.
And we should probably include the other part of the wetland that the town does own in that lease for the school to use, because the school has been using some of it, it's a little...
Or you could just not, just leave it be.
A little bit further on.
Yeah, it's a little further out.
Southern portion.
And on the subject of a lease, potential lease between the town and the new district, I really think that would be mutually beneficial. The town would get to keep the property, which we've, which we've had and been good stewards of for over 100 years, and the new district would be required to spend less time and resources on managing the building, and there would be, well, there would be less cost involved in capital improvements. Those would be the responsibility for the town, so I think this would, would be appealing to the district. It may be less cost, but in ex, excuse me, and in exchange, the town would get to retain ownership of the property, and because the budget is very sensitive, very sensitive area in the, in this, in this merger, and there's going to be financial pressure, so by maintaining ownership of the property, it seems to me Woodbury would be providing a benefit to the district.
The town of Woodbury would have to understand what the historic cost to maintain the school and library and community room is or was, so that, you know, we'd be sure that, you know, the cost per student coming from Woodbury would not have any monies in it earmarked for building maintenance, just for education. So that the budget, we would have to have some historic information, historical information on how much it costs to maintain the building, which...
Well, they would have to be split up between the district and the town as far as who's responsible for what, operating cost versus long-term...
That's another lease, that's the next.
Yeah, so we would have to understand how much it's going to cost the town to maintain the building, which we haven't been doing for...
No, no.
Norm, you're shaking your head.
Like I say, that's to get worked out, yeah, just assume without the proper legal advice.
Yeah.
Well, I hope the lawyer knows a lot, because I don't, yeah, I mean, that, that is really, would be really necessary, because we're just kind of babbling at each other like...
That's right, I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Brian, anything?
No?
All right, cool. Well, it's 8:01, and I'd like to introduce a motion that we adjourn. Discussion? Meeting's adjourned, 8:01. Thank you all for coming.